Good evening. Welcome to our 10th board meeting. Uh, as custom will rise with pledge allegiance and we have a young lady that's gonna lead us into pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is Abisha Shesta. Abisha is a 4th grader at Delmar Elementary and she's here with her family this afternoon, this evening actually. Abisha, would you like to introduce your guests tonight?
My dad's name is Ajit Shesta, my mom's name is Pipta Pratan, and my 3-year-old little sister is Vivasha Shesta. And Mr. Bryson is my principal for Delmar Elementary School.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much. Get a picture. Photo op.
3.2 on our agenda, approve of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda for this evening.
Move we approve the agenda?
I got a motion and I got a second in the discussion. Hearing that all in favor, say the five saying aye. Against, say, thank you. 3.3 is a movement of silence with the loss of some of our board family. Sharita Conaway, instructional assistant, East Salisbury, and family center assistant, group leader, and summer school assistant. Devonte Hickerson, who had been a freshman at Y High, and Diane Pellegrino, who was our supervisor of health service. At this time in your own way, we'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. And also, while we're on this part of the agenda, please keep all the youngsters, students, families in Florida, Texas, that are going through life changes because of all the stuff that's happened in their states, please keep them in your prayers also. Thank you. 3.4, we have a presentation of 2000 Park data. Dr. Hanlon?
Well, I'll just make a few comments. Mr. Briggs, our assistant superintendent and chief academic officer is going to take the lead in presenting to you an overview of our park assessment scores, our results from last school year. And I just want to remind you that this is one measure in many ways that we measure our school system. I will tell you that you'll see some strengths and opportunities for improvement, as Mr. Briggs will point out to you, but I do believe generally that we are moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon. Mr. Fitzgerald, new board members, more veteran board members. And Mr. Flag, it's good to see Keith, one of my former students at Mardella. To start with, I want to introduce, or I'm gonna actually have them introduce themselves. I have some of our outstanding members of our instructional team here with me, and they'll be able to help us if there's any specific, sorry, Mr. Fitzgerald, if there's any specific questions in regards to instructional practices over the last year or coming year, have some outstanding members here who will be able to help us field those questions. So if we can go down to first row and second row, they can introduce themselves and hand the mic. Let's do that.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Tom Freddy, data analyst.
Hi, I'm Ellen Harlan. I'm supervisor of high school English and world languages.
Hi, I'm Andrew Todd. I'm supervisor of secondary mathematics.
Good evening, I'm Julie Dill, supervisor of elementary mathematics.
Paige Maxorley, supervisor of reading for middle school.
Gary Doss, local accountability coordinator.
Good evening, I'm Patty Blevins, supervisor of elementary reading instruction.
Okay, as Dr. Hanlon said, this is just one indicator, and because of our primary students do not take the park assessment, it's also not an indicator of all our schools. So just keep that in mind as we go through this. Also, the state of Maryland transitioned fully to the park assessments 3 years ago, so that we have 3 years of data that we'll be able to share tonight, so you'll see a little bit of trend data that we've been able to start to see over the last 3 years. Each student who takes the park assessment gets a scale score, and that scale score places them on one of these 5 levels. Obviously, starting with level 1, where they do not meet expectations, level 2, where they meet some, 3, they are approaching expectations, and then up into level 4 and 5 is obviously where we would like our students. Level 4, meaning that they met all expectations, and then level 5 even exceeding those. So keep that color scale in mind as we review 7 different assessment types, from elementary math, middle school math, and then our 2 high school math assessments, and then the same thing on the ELAe side, where we'll have elementary ELAe, middle school ELAe, and then high school English 10.
And ELAe being English Language Arts.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon. To try to simplify a lot of data into a time-sensitive manner, I'm gonna have 7 pairs of slides. The first slide will show you what percentage of our students fell into each one of these categories. So the first slide for each one of those will show what percentage of our Waukesha County students fell into each one of those, and then the second slide will show you the percentage of students who met or exceeded expectations, and that's broken down into various subgroups. So while we look at all students, we also look at various subgroups, which you'll see in just a second. So to start, and again, as you see by the title, obviously, math in our elementary schools. So this is cumulative in grades 3 through 5 combined. Each grade saw a decrease in the percentage of students in the levels 1 and level 2, and an increase in the percentage scoring in levels 4 and 5. And so it's almost exactly what you would want to see for 3 years' worth of data, starting in 2015, 2016 in the middle, and then 2017 as we move to the right. And so as you see, the blue category, the level 5, is increasing each year. The green, the level 4, is also increasing, with the orange and red categories decreasing. I'll be honest and say that not all of them look like this, but this is a good one to start with, because that's exactly what we would want to see, okay? And then here's where we are talking about the various subgroups, okay? These are subgroups that we report to the state of Maryland. Just for some of the acronyms, so everybody's aware, obviously, on the right-hand side we have SPED, the Special Ed Students, students with an individualized education plan. ELL is our English Language Learners, and then FARM is our Free and Reduced Meal Students, and that's an indicator of socioeconomic status. And again, as we would like to see, for a 3-year, and each bar represents, the bar on the left is, again, 2 years ago, 3 years ago, the bar in the middle is 2 years ago, and then the bar on the right is last year. So again, we're pleased to see, for this group of students in the math category, those bars increasing each and every year. All right? Also, while we have on this slide, I think it's important to note that in grades 3 and 4, we were above the state average. I think that's an important thing to note. We talk about districts from all over the state. We are one of the lower SES districts.
SES.
Socioeconomic status. Thank you, Dr. Hanlon.
I'll keep you honest.
You got it. All right? And we, in talking about SES, we do have 61% of our students are in that FARM category, 61%. So just keep that in mind as well. All right, so now we'll move up to the middle school category. So now we're talking grades 6 through 8, again, still in math. And although we saw a decrease in the percentage meeting expectations, I do think, again, it's important to highlight that we were better than the state average in both grades 7 and 8. So again, we did see a decrease in that green category, where the blue stayed the same, but that is, it was an issue throughout the state, and again, we were better than the state average in both our 7th and 8th grades. Again, middle school math by subgroups. We did see a slight increase over the last 2 years in both SPED and ELL, although obviously they're not where we want them at all. And for our African-American population, although we saw an overall slight decrease, we made gains in both 7th and 8th grade. So I do think it's important to celebrate any successes that we can have, and again, in 7th and 8th grade we did see increases. Moving on to the high school level, Algebra 1. And again, you see an increase in the percentage meeting or exceeding expectations combined, and it's great to see a decrease in that level 1. So we are moving students forward. Obviously, we're not satisfied with where we are, but seeing a decrease in students in that level 1 category is important. Again, by subgroup. And so while we're happy that we did see an increase in all students, several of our subgroup categories did see a slight decrease, and that's something that we're taking note of. And I should've said this at the beginning, but if you have any questions throughout, feel free to throw them out there, or if you want to, we can discuss a little bit at the end as well.
What's the multi-grade on the Algebra 1?
Algebra 1 predominantly 9th graders. We do have a section of our 8th grade students who take the assessment, and then occasionally a 10th or 11th grader. And then Algebra 2, which would be predominantly 10th or 11th grade, we do have some of our top 9th grade students, not anymore, no, 10th grade predominantly, who take the Algebra 2. And again, if you're looking at those top blue and green categories, where we would like to see increase, we do see that here. And we do have a decrease in both the percentage of student scoring in both level 1 and level 2. So again, it's not where we want it, but we do see that we're making gains. Okay, there's our math assessment on the park. Oh, one more, sorry. And there's the subgroups for Algebra 2. And here you might notice, and I'll put Andrew on the spot just for a quick second, you'll see that, similar with all students, where we went from higher, down, and then back up. That has to do with the, that was adding the 4th math, and we had a bunch of students taking that assessment for the first time last year, or 2 years ago.
And we also shifted away from 8th grade Algebra 1 2 years ago, so we're starting to see kids that have now had the true progression of Algebra 1 geometry, now Algebra 2, and we had a transition year there in the middle. So that explains something.
And it's great to see those increases last year from 2 years ago.
Is that just an anomaly on the ELL students?
Yeah, I'm thinking, my guess is it was a very small population that took it. I'm guessing there might've been 8 kids that took it and 6 scored well.
So a few can really skew the...
Yeah.
Yeah, Algebra 1's not a graduation requirement, so it's certainly not a true sense of code of work.
Algebra 2?
Yeah. All right, now we'll start back over in our elementary schools with ELAe, English Language Arts. And again, this is cumulative for grades 3 through 5, and each grade saw a decrease in the percentage of students in that level 1 and level 2 range combined, and then an increase in the total scoring in the top 2 categories. By subgroup, similar to the math in grades 3 through 5, we're happy with the continued progress of the majority of our subgroups, and again, it's good to see those bars moving forward, moving up. Our middle school students, like our elementary students, each grade level decreased the percentage of students in that level 1 and 2 range, which again, trying to narrow that bar for the orange and the red. And grades 7 and 8 increased the percentage in both levels 4 and 5. So we saw our most growth out of our 7th and 8th grade students there. By subgroup, again, while it's good to see that the all-students category increased, similar to the math in the middle school, we did have some subgroups improve while others did see a slight decrease. And the last assessment that I have to share with you is our ELAe, our English 10, which is our graduation requirement for our high school students. And it's great to see, again, if you look from left to right, that both the blue and the green category is widening, and the orange and the red narrowing. And then by subgroup, again, increase, we increased the percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations by almost 6. And similar to many of our other assessments, it's great to see the continued improvements for all students, as well as our various subgroups. So that was it as far as the formal presentation goes. I'll admit that it was challenging to try to condense a lot of information that we have for our entire county into a workable timeframe for a presentation at a board meeting, but we wanted to give you a good overall picture of where we were. We acknowledge that we still have some growth to go, but we're happy with the continued progress that we're making, and we'll be continuing to work as a team to move the district forward.
So I guess that all this data, there's some information somewhere that compares every category to the state averages?
Correct.
So we know where we stand. Does it do county by county, or just state versus us?
You can go county by county.
I like that thing.
Yep. Grade by grade.
So you can break it down?
Yes.
Marilyn Report Card?
Okay.
And find that information by county.
And our supervisors, not to put them on the spot, they do a great job of actually drilling down teacher by teacher, what classroom practices are being effective, which ones aren't, what are we doing in this school that seems to be working, possibly better than this school. So while we gave you a good overall district perspective, these guys are drilling down into the specific classroom practices and seeing where it's happening.
So you can slice it many, many different ways from all the data?
Most definitely.
Good.
I've got one just out of curiosity.
All right.
When a student comes in, say, takes 10th grade Algebra 2, do they come in, sit down at a desk, you give them a folder with a number 2, lead pen, and they open it up and they fill in the dots? Does the student come in, sit down at a laptop, and follow a program? How is it physically administered? And how long?
That Algebra 2 student would be, it's a computerized assessment, that they take either on a laptop or a desktop computer. No more paper and pencil.
And this year, with the improved numbers of laptops going around, we're gonna have a much better grade.
We would hope to see that the comfort level of students on laptops and on computers on a daily basis, yes, I would like to see their familiarity and their comfort level taken an assessment increase, yeah.
That's great, that's great.
Did I understand you to say that 61% of the students are foreign students?
That's correct. That was last year's numbers. Last year, it was 61% of our students are foreign. And that's increased probably since the last time you were here, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yeah. And I don't see it decreasing. If any, like, well, we don't have, I'm just purely projecting, my guess is that number would probably increase this year.
I'm kind of surprised you're not commenting more about a 50% increase in all students in grade 10. That's a pretty spectacular increase.
It is pretty spectacular.
Very impressive.
Yep.
Congratulations for that.
There's some great English 10 teachers, Mr. Turner.
Yes, there are some great.
Any other questions?
In the comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
3.5, student representatives to the board. And at our board table tonight from Mardella High School is Keith Flag. Well, let's know what's going on in Mardella. I think you got something you'd like to talk about, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, I'm Keith Flag. I'm happy to represent Mardella. Over here at Mardella, we've marched our first parade at Beaver Run. It was pretty hot, but we, you know, we marched it, we had fun, we were socializing. We were a top band several times at the parades, and we have lots of awards for those. And we're doing a color run later, on the 29th of this month, I'm really excited about. Mostly, we've got a new track running on that every single day. Super great. A great addition. Also, we had a cookout for our soccer team. Soccer team's doing pretty good. We're working hard out there on the field. We had a back-to-school cookout, that was a week before school started. You get everybody excited, everybody friendly with each other, and you also get to know your schedule before school, see what room you're in. We had a homecoming set up. We're having a Beauty and the Beast theme this time, so it's gonna be interesting. I have to take part in, set it up, be fun, do all decorations. We're looking forward to adding additional long jump and high jump, and also discus park to our track as well. Not only just the field's been lined and everything, we're also getting those additions, we do meets. Mrs. Hastings has come over as our new principal. I know it was Mrs. Eskridge, but now she's moved off, and it was Mr. Briggs not too long ago. Also, feedback from students about the gowns have been overall neutral, they're not really caring much to switch or to stay, but they do want it to stay 2 different colors for options. Some like the gold more, and some like the green more, some are like, oh, it's way more pretty, you know, pretty gold. They don't want to keep it just one color, neutral as colleges do. You know, it's been a tough issue to bring about. They're just very excited to be graduating overall. So I like to say.
Okay, you can step right there, unless you got to go.
Any questions?
No, but you're there for the full term, unless you got homework for the meeting.
Oh.
Yeah. You get to stay. Okay, from James and Bennett, Rachel Burley. If you'll go right up to the center microphone, please. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Hi, I am Rachel Burley. I am the 2nd vice president of the SGA executive board for Bennett. I'm currently filling in for Rowan Osman, who is our president because she can't make it tonight, so I'm just the substitute.
Something about band practice or something?
Yeah, she had band practice. So to start off, we had a very successful freshman first day, which I know Mardella doesn't have that, so just so you know, freshman first day is where the freshmen get to come in to the school, and it's only the freshmen at the school, so it's not, you know, all the students kind of bombarding and, you know, acting crazy the first day. So for freshman first day, we oriented the freshmen with a club fair, which is where we had all the clubs have tables in the main area of the school, and the freshmen could talk to different representatives from the clubs, get to know what Bennett's all about, which is getting involved with the school, getting involved with your community, and having an enriching experience at school by getting involved. We had our SGA class officers and upperclassmen volunteer at freshman first day, where we gave tour to the freshmen and sat in the classrooms with them, and they got to talk to us and ask us questions, and we got to give them some valuable advice that they can use throughout all 4 years of high school. On Saturday, we had our football game at the Shipyard, which is what Bennett calls our football stadium. We wore purple to support, show support for pancreatic cancer patients, and overall, the football game had some good school spirit, even though I think we lost.
It did.
But that, you know, that doesn't matter, as long as we had good school spirit.
Correct.
Yes. Our football, I mean, our homecoming dance is on October 28th, and the football game for that is that day at noon at the county stadium, where we will announce our homecoming court and the SGA officers. And we are extremely excited to have our new principal, Mrs. Eskridge, who showed great school spirit with the "We Will Rock You" video, which won Bennett 3rd place in the county for school spirit. So that's awesome. And I think that wraps it up. I just want to end with saying that we had a great first week overall, and throughout the rest of the school year, we'll focus on instruction and moving forward and showing school spirit for Bennett.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
From Parkside High School, Colleen Simkins.
Good evening. I just want to start off by saying how thankful I am for this opportunity to come here and represent my school. Like you announced, my name is Colleen Simkins. I am here as the executive board president of the SGA at Parkside High School. And because I'm the president of the SGA, the Student Government Association, I thought I should start off by talking about this great new process that we have when it comes to selecting officers as well as SGA representatives. We completely changed the election process last year because we noticed that it seemed that the only people that were being voted for were the people that were just known by students. And the students were voting for people that they didn't really know about, who they didn't really know what their values were and what they saw for the school, and so we changed the entire process. We had the students who wanted to run, they had to sign a contract, saying, "This is what I understand I will be responsible for doing if elected. This is what I understand I will be responsible for and what I need to do in order to prepare for this position." That also allowed some accountability, so they knew what they were going into, coming into it, and we also had each one of them make a video that was shared throughout the classes throughout the day, and it kind of let the students have a better informed decision about who they were going to be electing. They got to, one, connect a name with a face, and they also got to hear what they wanted for the school, what their goals were. And I was very thankful for that, because I'm not one of the most popular people at my school, and so it was really nice to just have, you know, I wasn't well-known all around the school, but once videos were sent out, a lot of students were able to see who was running and understand who they were, even though they might've known their name originally. And that was fantastic. I also want to comment on how we had our first football game before the school year even started. We had it on September 2nd, it was a Saturday, and even though the school year hadn't started yet, the stands were filled with Parkside students. It was fantastic. Our football team won 42 to nothing against Kent County, which I think is pretty impressive. I was very proud of them. And along with that, we've just had an increase in student morale in the school. We saw during our freshman transition day, which like Bennett is like the freshman first day, it's a transition day because they're coming from middle school to high school. They get to see the new procedures and work with a new schedule and kind of understand how there's a little bit of a change between middle school and high school. And when we got there, they first sat down in the gymnasium, and we had a pep rally. And it was so great to see these freshmen who hadn't even walked the halls of Parkside yet, be so excited to be part of the Ram fam, which is what we call ourselves because of our mascot. And it was so great to see how excited they were to be a part of our school, because it's not just a school, it's a community, and it's a family, and that was really enforced that day, and that was fantastic. We also changed what we did that day a little bit. We had a brand-new schedule. I remember my freshman year wasn't as involved as it was this year, and it's been such an increase these past 4 years. We had the students be engaged in a scavenger hunt, which was, which was in charge by the students. We had what we call Ram-bassadors, again, playing off the mascot. And what we did is we were all in charge, that it was not put on teachers, it was not put on staff and faculty. It gave the students, one, a chance to have a leadership opportunity, but it also let the students know that just because we're students and we're not teachers or staff or administrators, that we know what Parkside is about. And we wanted to show them the example that we have and how proud we are of our school. And so we were able to set that example and let them know that not only do teachers not tolerate not having school spirit or being bummed all the time, but also students really like to enforce having school spirit. It was a great success. At the end of the day, we had all the students gather in the auditorium, and we had so many upperclassmen come that day to help out and to volunteer, that the entire stage was filled with us. And students were able to ask questions, and at the end, each one of us... And when we got there, they first sat down in the gymnasium, and we had a pep rally. And it was so great to see these freshmen who hadn't even walked the halls of Parkside yet be so excited to be part of the Ram fam, which is what we call ourselves because of our mascot. And it was so great to see how excited they were to be a part of our school because it's not just a school, it's a community, and it's a family. And that was really enforced that day, and that was fantastic. We also changed what we did that day a little bit. We had a brand-new schedule. I remember my freshman year wasn't as involved as it was this year, and it's been such an increase these past four years. We had the students be engaged in a scavenger hunt, which was, which was in charge by the students. We had what we call Ram-bassadors, again, playing off the mascot. And what we did is we were all in charge. That it was not put on teachers. It was not put on staff and faculty. It gave the students, one, a chance to have a leadership opportunity, but it also let the students know that just because we're students and we're not teachers or staff or administrators, that we know what Parkside is about. And we wanted to show them the example that we have and how proud we are of our school. And so we were able to set that example and let them know that not only do teachers not tolerate not having school spirit or being bummed all the time, but also students really like to enforce having school spirit. It was, it was a great success. At the end of the day, we had all the students gather in the auditorium. And we had so many upperclassmen come that day to help out and to volunteer, that the entire stage was filled with us. And students were able to ask questions. And at the end, each one of us got the microphone and got to give a little piece of advice, or something that we wished we had known, or something that we found to be successful in our high school career. And that was a great, that was a great success. And we've also been trying more to have student involvement. When it comes to scheduling, instead of the students having to come directly to the office, we have now have these QR codes around the school. So, one, kids do not have to miss out on class opportunities, but also they get to use their strength of technology. And that's been a huge success. And it's also allowed the guidance counselors to not be so bombarded with so many students in their office at once, and so it's been great. Coming to the literacy plan that we have for our school, we really focused on literacy because it drives everything, not only in our classes, but in our lives. So each classroom you go into, whether it's an English class, a math class, or an elective, your writing and your reading, and you're using your comprehension. And you're using it because we are aware that you're gonna need it to be successful. One of the main things that Parkside focuses on is being college and career-ready. So whether you wanna go right to college or you wanna go right to the workforce, you are prepared. And I think that is fantastic that we always have that focus. So for PBIS, we've usually been bronze, but this past year we were silver, which is a great improvement. We've really captured what I've been saying, this Ram fam idea, that when students come in as freshmen, they might not know everyone. They might not know anyone. But they know that we are proud of our school, and we are proud to be where we are at. And capturing that has allowed us to be a family and to be close. And it's really fantastic to see freshmen come in and be surrounded by these upperclassmen, who they probably thought were gonna be really scary and really mean, and to have smiles on their face. That anxiety, that stress, just seemed to disappear because they knew where they were at, and they knew that they had people there to support them. And that was absolutely fantastic. Our homecoming is scheduled for October thirteenth. It is a Friday. The football game will be held the Thursday before. And we decided to have it on that Friday because it works with all the other schools' homecomings, as well as there is Delmar Vicade. For those of you who do not know, that's a tournament of bands. So that's all marching bands will be coming, and so that's a really major event. And so it just works around that, and it works for everyone's schedule. We already have a theme, but I think we're gonna keep it a surprise, so... But it's good. It's fantastic. We have a great motto. You'll love it. Yeah, just, Parkside's been doing really well. I know we've only had a weekend, but it's been great to see the improvement from my freshman year to my senior year, and I'm very thankful to be at Parkside. Thank you.
How you making out with the construction going on over there?
I am glad you asked. I am very glad you asked. That was one of my first things that I talked about with my principal, Ms. Penny. So construction, I don't know if you are aware of how it's been situated, but we're working on one level at a time because knocking it all out once would just really affect our learning environment in a very negative way. So we've been working on the upstairs, and that should be done by December. And it should be completed by January of two thousand twenty, or if possible, by November of two thousand eighteen. Well, it would be fantastic. The teachers are very understanding that some kids have a longer travel than they used to, and they understand that if you're a couple seconds late to class, which is great, but that's not really been affecting us, you know? We've had that time, and our teachers are understanding. And so they prepare their lessons ahead of time, understanding that if you miss a couple seconds of class, here's how you're gonna catch up. And we're gonna make sure you're still involved and that you're still engaged in our lesson, and it's not gonna affect the students that were here on time. And I think that's been fantastic. Also, just, the route's been kind of awkward, and we're still trying to figure it out. But that's the thing about Parkside is when things get tough, we work on it together. And that's been really great, and teachers are understanding as well as students.
It's good to hear because once it's done, it's gonna be great for Parkside.
It's gonna be beautiful. And of course, they do it after I graduate, but that's another matter.
Well, my dad can tell you what it's like.
Yeah. He wanted me to say hi, by the way. All right. Any more questions?
Nope.
All right. Thank you.
From Y-Hi, Nicholas. And I'm not gonna try to pronounce the last name.
You can help us with that.
Yeah, you can help me when you get up to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Nguyen, and I am the executive board president of the SGA at Wycomico High School. I am very proud to be representing Y-Hi today. So for our first achievement, during the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year, Wycomico High School had its highest number of AP testers ever. We also had the highest amount of passing scores in the last five years. With the resurgence of interest in gaining college credit through AP testing, Wycomico High School will continue its support for those students. So before freshman transition day, Wycomico High School holds an annual barbecue dedicated to those incoming freshmen. Freshmen were introduced to newer clubs at school, received their new schedules, met their new teachers, and were given a score, given a tour of the school. This year, we had a record number of freshmen attend the barbecue. The exact number was two hundred ten freshmen with their families. This allows for more freshmen to feel comfortable during their first day at school, thus helping the school year start smoothly. On our freshman transition day, the Student Leadership and Student Government Association dedicated their time to help freshmen feel more comfortable at Y-Hi. SLA conducted Q and A sessions. Any question that a freshman had was answered by an upperclassman who had sufficient knowledge in that field. While the Q and A sessions were happening, SGA was tasked with educating the freshmen on the county's dress code and technologies policy. SGA performed a skit on what not to do during the school day, and then the students had to name all of the violations. Many freshmen found the skit funny, and the upperclassmen enjoyed performing. The efforts from the staff and the upperclassmen commenced the school year on an enthusiastic note. On the sports subject, Wycomico High School is fielding full teams, including football, volleyball, soccer, cross-country, unified tennis, and golf. After a strong preseason, one of our first athletic highlights came early when our varsity football teams beat Stephen Decatur eight to three last Friday. Yesterday, the JRTC program at our school held its annual nine eleven memorial service in front of the main office. The JRTC program at Y-Hi creates new leaders within our school and community. One of our signature programs at Y-Hi is the Tribe After School program. There, students are able to receive a meal before tutoring starts. And when tutoring starts, students can receive homework help, participate in test prep, and complete credit recovery. There's enrichment during the second hour, such as cool eats and robotics. The initiative that will showcase, this initiative showcases our dedication to our students even after school hours. In terms of SGA future activities, our homecoming and crucial catch game, which is our football game dedicated to breast cancer awareness in the month of October, which will be held on October nineteenth. The homecoming dance on October twentieth will be themed "Blue and Gold School Spirit." To maximize donations for the Susan G. Komen Foundation, we plan on selling T-shirts and hosting a hot chocolate bar at the game. We will also be selling one-dollar pink ribbons representing the breast cancer patients, past and present. Wycomico High School and the Blood Bank of Del Marva will be hosting blood drives on November twentieth and April twelfth. With our new spirit, we plan on making this year the best ever. I am proud to say that our first general assembly meeting of SGA had our biggest turnout this year. There were much more people there since I started at ninth, when I started ninth grade year. Wycomico High School is off to a great start to the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year. The students and staff are very excited for the upcoming school year. We may be one school, however, we are better known as one tribe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is why I think all of us sitting up here do what we do, is for these young students to come out here and let us know what's going on at their individual schools and be so enthusiastic. It's really what, I know that's why I do it. Thank you. Three point six public comments. I don't believe, I don't believe we have any public comments, but there's someone sitting in the back I forgot to recognize early on. We have a friend of the Board of Education and the county councilman, John Hall, sitting in the back. And we're glad to have you with us this evening. Always a pleasure to have you. And Nicholas, both Mr. Hall and myself are graduates of Y-Hi, so, you know? It was always home where, even though I'm very, very active at Bennett. I guess we don't have any public comments tonight, so moving on. Three point seven superintendent's report.
Well, good evening, everyone. I wanted to just begin by welcoming our new board members, Mr. Brown, Mr. Turner, Mr. Murray. Thank you so much for joining our board. Look forward to working with you and any support that we can give you to help you transition into this role. We're ready and very willing to assist, so welcome. I also wanna welcome our new student representatives. You did a great job tonight. We look forward to hearing from you at each board meeting. And in fact, in between board meetings, if there's something that comes up in your schools, please don't ever hesitate to reach out to one of us to let us know what's going on, both for good and anything that might be concerning you. We welcome hearing your feedback. My first item after those comments is that I would like to welcome Mr. Bill Reddish. There he is. Mr. Reddish is here from Congressman Andy Harris's office to present a congressional certificate. Certificate of recognition, Mr. Reddish.
You can take it right off there if you like.
Oh, you know, you've been, yes, you do know.
Yeah. Somebody said, that's like the old, that's like the old two hippies that were sitting in the car. One said, "Turn on the radio," and the other one leaned over and went, "I love you." Okay, never mind. Some of you, it's an old joke. It's really old. This is, this is a fun thing to be able to do because I've been working for Congressman Harris now. It'll be five years at the end of this month. And the, let's face it, nobody ever calls her congressman when they're happy. So this is, this is a fun occasion to be able to do. And I kinda pushed Dr. Harris a little bit because he's, of course, a scientist. He's the only member of Congress that's done research for NIH funded by the Congress. And of course, as a, as a medical doctor and also a public health official prior to becoming congressman. So he's really big into the math and the sciences, but I wanted to do something because I, my degree's in the arts. And I started out to be a band instructor because of the Wycomico County Music Program. And it is still going strong today. And I got a chance, when I was on the radio, to meet Gary Beecham. And Gary, of course, was a band instructor, and then, of course, a supervisor for many years. And wouldn't you know, by the time I wanna recognize his program, he goes and retires on me, so... But we're glad to be here because we had gotten a notification from the Music Merchants Association of America. I believe that's the National Association of Music Merchants and their foundation, which have, again, in this past school year, recognized the Wycomico County Music Program as one of the outstanding music programs in the United States. And what's really special about this is that out of the past eleven years, they've received this recognition eight times, and this, I believe, is the seventh year in a row. So Gary went out on a high note, without a doubt. Yeah, no pun intended. Absolutely. This is like old JC week here, with you sitting there, and you sitting there, and you sitting there. We are on the JC's together. But I started out to be a band director and backed into a little thing called broadcasting, and that wound up, that's how I wound up working for the congressman. And this gentleman right here knows a little something about radio. We worked together at JDY a little bit, didn't we? Darnly. You had hair then. Yeah, I remember that. But I wanna ask Gary and, of course, our current supervisor to come up and take this presentation, if they would. And hopefully, Paul will get a snapshot or two of it while we're doing this. But this is very short. It's a certificate of special congressional recognition presented to the Wycomico County Public Schools in recognition of being named one of the best communities for music education in the United States by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation, presented on this date, September twelfth, two thousand seventeen, signed by Congressman Andy Harris, M.D., member of Congress, and of course, our representative. Gentlemen, congratulations on behalf of Congressman Harris. I'm sure it's heavy duty. This just reminds me, we know why the world isn't flat. Do you know why the world isn't flat? Because if it was flat, every cat in the world would have knocked everything off of it by now. Thank you very much for letting me be here for a few minutes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reddish. And please thank Congressman Harris for us. The second item that I have in my report is to just spotlight or shine special recognition on an outstanding, we have many outstanding teams in our school system, but I would like to recognize tonight Lisa Ashby and her team for the work that they did in moving the relocation of our Choices Academy to Callaway Street in such an efficient and expeditious manner. I also want, I wish that Joe Vignali had been with us this evening. Mr. Vignali is the construction project manager. And I understand from Mrs. Ashby that he really was the driving force behind making that transition go so well. In fact, when Mrs. Ashby came into my office and shared with us that we were going to possibly be able to open on time Choices Academy on Callaway Street rather than transitioning through Wycomico Middle School, which was the original plan, we were thrilled. It's the right thing to do for students, and we just really appreciate, Lisa, your leadership and the work of Mr. Vignali and your team. Thank you so much for your hard work. And it is up and running. Students are there at Choices Academy, and it's wonderful. I know, Mr. Fitzgerald, you've been over there.
I had a tour yesterday, and for new board members, if you have the opportunity, please go over there. It's really nice.
Back towards six-thirty this morning.
And I would be remiss if I did not also recognize the city of Salisbury and Mayor Jake Day. As you know, we have a partnership with the mayor in opening, in a joint project for a community center there with our Choices Academy. But he was really instrumental in helping us expedite that move by helping us expedite some of the processes that go through the city. And so we really appreciate the help of Mayor Day and the city also. I wanna also let everyone know that as part of this joint project with the city, we're going to be hosting a community barbecue on the property on October the seventeenth at five o'clock P.M. And I will remind board members of that date again. But that will be an opportunity for us to talk to the community about their aspirations for the community center there on Callaway Street. So we look forward to that opportunity and hearing their voices as well for this future joint project. And I'll just end by talking about what a great opening we've had as a school system. It feels like we never, we never stopped. Students are back, and, and Mr. Briggs and I, along with a number of others, visited a lot of schools on the first day of school. And we started together at Prince Street and ended back together at Wycomico Middle School, but went our separate ways to a number of schools throughout the day. And just, it was great to see students' smiling faces, parents at bus stops and their smiling faces, and teachers who were so ready for students to return. I saw freshman first day or transition day at Y-Hi and at Bennett on my stops on the first day, and just a lot of smiling faces. So Mr. Butler and Mrs. Sailor put together a great video that we're gonna launch, but I'll share it with you for the first time this evening about our first day experience.
And what a beautiful day it was. How about the first day of school being lived at your bus stop by Superintendent Dr. Donna Hanlon?
Meeting the parent of a child who was going to school for the first time was, you can tell that she had some nerves. Little apprehensive about her child going off to school for the first time, but the child got on the bus easily, and we rode together to school.
Good morning. A lot of faces I see returning, and I see a lot of new faces. My name is Mr. Moore.
Everybody's singing.
I'm calling Mr. Keith, but you call me Mr. Moore. As long as you call me Mr..
First stop was Prince Street Elementary School. Lots of smiles, hugs, even some tears on this first day of the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year in Wycomico County as we tag along with Dr. Donna Hanlon and new Assistant Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer, Mr. Rick Riddens. There was certainly a lot going on at Prince Street on this Tuesday morning, which is also, for the first time, offering full-time retreat. It seemed where she went on this first day, Dr. Hanlon got quite the welcome, especially here at Pemberton.
I was greeted by the Pemberton Panda, and a number of, a few fifth graders and a few, I believe, second graders gave me a warm welcome and then went with us around the school to visit different areas. the school to visit different areas of the school building. So that was great.
It was a big first day for new Assistant Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer, Rick Ritz. He made the rounds as well to a number of schools and even made a number of students' first day.
Superintendent to the teachers who, you know, some of the rules and routines, which we like to establish early on. And I saw one young man had his birthday hat on, so I had to high-five his birthday. Um, but some of the other kids kinda felt a little left out, so I needed to, uh, make sure I give them all a little love and say, well, I'd high-five the entire first grade classroom down there with it. It was awesome.
For sixth and ninth grade students, this first day is one day of victory. You get used to their surroundings before the entire school body returns.
It's a great opportunity for them to get used to the space, to their teachers, to the resources that are available to them in their schools. So the transition day that we have on the first day of school for sixth graders and ninth graders, I think, really works. And getting that and getting an opportunity to talk to a number of upperclassmen who are happy to be upperclassmen and to be there helping today for that smooth transition for freshmen.
One of the highlights of the day, stopping by the new location of the Choices Academy on Callaway and Round Streets in Salisbury. This camp is put together for our students in record time as they are ready to start in the second week of September. What a day it was for students at Wycomico County Public Schools getting the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year off to a great start.
With the energy that I saw from students and parents and teachers and, and everyone on the first day back.
Well, there's a little bit of nerves. I'll say it was mostly excitement. They're, they're in class, they're ready to learn.
So, thank you, Mr. Butler and, um, Mrs. Sailor for putting, putting that video together that highlights, um, many of the good things that we have happening already in our schools for this year. I will, uh, tell the board and, and the community that, um, our pre-kindergarten enrollment is up. Last year, we were, I believe, at five hundred and forty-five students, and we're up to six hundred and twelve this year. So we're, um, increasing the opportunity for pre-kindergarten students, which we believe is so important. And you'll be hearing much more about that and our plans for expanding that as we move through the school year. So that's my report.
Four point one. Need a motion to prove the open session minutes of August first work session and August eighth regular meeting.
So moved.
I got a motion.
Second.
Yeah, there's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same. For new board members, I think some items, uh, I think we have nine of them tonight. We, uh, we don't go down individually, uh, but if you have a question on any of the consent items, please bring them up. We should have people in the audience to be able to go over any questions you have. Not hearing any. I'll entertain a motion for the consent items.
I move we approve the consent items?
A second.
And I have a motion. I have a second. Any more, any discussion at all? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same. Thank you. Six point one. Our audit firm, TGM Group LLC Certified Public Accountants, has completed the School Activities Fund Audit for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. The filing documents were provided to the Audit Committee in advance for their review. School Activities Fund audited financial statements, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. School Activities Fund letters of recommendations. The Audit Committee reviewed and accepted reports at their special meeting with the auditors on August the twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen. Upon the Superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to the board accept the audit report submitted for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen?
I move we accept the audit report?
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion. The only thing I will say before we vote, Jean and I served on the Audit Committee with Dr. Chase. With Dr. Chase was not able to be there. Uh, I was very impressed with all the, all the monies that the, is handled in each individual school. And we only had, I think, two items that was very minor. So I know Bruce has set the, the tone, so Jesse, you have to keep it going. Uh, and also, uh, please, and I'm doing this publicly, uh, give Patty a lot, a lot of compliments because from what the auditor shared with Jean and I, she's the one that runs, runs it. So, so please let her know whatever she's doing, keep it up. Any other comments? I got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank the bookkeepers. They did an excellent job, too. I meant to mention that. Yeah. Been Patty I as well. Thank you.
Six point two, personnel matters. It's information only. Uh, and we've had the opportunity to, uh, hear those earlier. Board members' reports. Mr. Brown, I'm gonna start on your end of the table and let you go first.
Uh, just want to say it's, um, it's good to be back, uh, with the board and look forward to working with, uh, the superintendent, the board members and the staff, and looking forward to doing good things with the school system and help them, to help all the students to be the best that they can be.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yeah, I'd like to like, uh, likewise, uh, tell the, the group how much I look forward to the next thirteen, fourteen months, uh, on the board. And I especially want to, uh, make a commendation of our student representatives and their reports this evening. They all are very, did an excellent job and very well spoken. And it's hard to believe how much is going on in the high schools, but I know it is. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Uh, I just want to, uh, thank Liesel and her group for that fantastic job they've done over there. What they've done in just a short period of time is, is truly unbelievable. I mean, you really have to, I followed the progress. I, I have the advantage of going by the school just one block off the road, and I would just shoot over there in the morning. Uh, I guess I was over there two, so much they copied down my tag number, wanting to know who I was. But I was just watching to see what was going on. And this morning, uh, they invited me in and, uh, wow, it's just so nice inside. It's so bright and clean. I mean, it's just unbelievable. Uh, when we have that picnic over there, I really encourage everybody to stop on by and have a burger and, and see what's happening. You'll be amazed.
And also, from what I was told yesterday when I was over there, there is gonna be a small basketball court.
There is.
Oh, there is? Outstanding. Outstanding.
Thanks to your suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Murray?
Thank you. It's, uh, quite an honor to be here on the board. I'm looking forward to it and working to help the students and the school board and all the staff and support our superintendent in any way I can. I was extremely impressed when we went over our, uh, test scores here in Wycomico County. It's something to be very proud of, uh, with everything going up. And I think that's a good sign to start off a good year with as a product of the Wycomico County Schools. And a former educator before retirement, I'm looking forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least.
Last but not least.
I have a few, few prepared comments, like thirty minutes now. So, I want to welcome the three new board members. It's great to have new blood on the board. It's great to, you'll bring in new thoughts and new ideas. It always, it helps all of us. Um, a year, a little over a year ago, I was in your seat, so it, you all will do fine. Um, and we appreciate you agreeing to serve. So on, on a personal note, I'll just talk about this weekend, our number two son got married. So that was a wonderful event, but being one of the hosts of the wedding, you see a lot of friends and relatives, and the conversation always turned to, hey, you're, you're on the school board, so how's it going? Do you like it? Are, are you doing any good? Are you making a difference? And it was always that conversation. And I always, and I said the same thing each, to each person. I said, yes, we're, we're making a difference. Every day, we open those schools, and every day, the students get better and, and the system gets better. And we're gonna be one of the best school systems in the state eventually, as, as our president, Don Fitzgerald, always says. That's what our goal is. But just looking at what we've been doing, the Choices Academy, the construction at the other schools, the increase and improvement in the park scores, um, it, the student representatives are so articulate and know what's going on and have so much enthusiasm. So I guess the answer would be, I don't know if I'm making a difference, but this group's making a difference. And the staff and the people in the school system and the students are making a difference in our schools. We are vastly becoming the best school system in the state, and I'm just proud to be a, a part of it and be a part of this board. So thank you all for what you all do, and thank you students for, uh, being a part of it.
Thank you. Uh, I echo what Jean just said. Uh, it's an honor to be here, and we can't do it as individuals. Neither board member individually can do anything. We got to do it as a group. And that's what we're, we're gonna do. Uh, I also like to welcome the three of you here. I was hoping for a first time in a long time to have seven members here tonight, but Maria's under the weather. But also, I'm the old man on the, on the board now. Uh, but I'd like to say, you know, uh, nine years ago when I came on the board, uh, Mr. Willie and Dr. Chase were here, and they mentored me. And I'm gonna miss them. But I'm also glad to have new people around me who bring, uh, different mindset in certain cases, but also bring, what I feel has been Don Fitzgerald's number one priority. I know bodies heard me say it many times. It's for the students of this county, all students of this county. So that's what we work on. And also, and with Mr. Hall here, I don't want to swell his head any, but we've got the best working relationship with county government that we've had in years since I've been on this board. And I say it all the time, we can't do it alone. We got to do it together. And I think all of us wants the best for our students that we can give them. And so that's what we all work for. And I'm glad to see us working together instead of beating heads. So with that said, uh, unless somebody else has anything for the good, uh, meeting adjourned.